I see Cory, I see Cory in the audience.
Yeah, I'm letting them in now, letting everybody in.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see everyone.
Jack.
We all surviving this heatwave? Hi Diane.
Hey, everybody.
Hi Diane.
So to answer your question, yeah, barely.
One of our air conditioning, the air handler for the first floor died. So fortunately, there's enough power in the second floor one to kind of keep it comfortable, but.
Could have fixed that for you, Jack, but I noticed you had supreme energy over there. So guess what? You're out, you're out of luck because I'm not going to help you.
I know that. I know that. I've been with him for 30 years. And I knew, I told them to, I told them to put a blanket over their truck.
You can leave that open if you want.
I could have called the guy and had him down your house in an hour, but guess what?
Yeah, would you like to? Yes, but you would then have to, to figure out and do the warranty replacement for the air handling unit.
Well, because this is supreme installation. That's why it broke.
Well, I'm not arguing with you, Paul. I'm not arguing with you at all. So aside from that, you never mind. So we Chris isn't here.
I see him. I don't see him, I see his name.
I see his name. Cory is here. Chris is here. Okay, I see that Cory is here. He needs to sign in with video Cory. There we go. Cory is here. Okay. Everybody being recorded and everything. Okay, I'd like to greeting, greetings Cohasset. This is the Tuesday, August 6th meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 and Cohasset's Facebook page. Public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be assessed using the link provided at the top of the agenda. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called upon by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions. Any participant, all votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hands on Zoom as the discretion of the chair will be promoted into the meeting. Members must provide their full name and address for the public record. Please note that comments other than Zoom will not be monitored. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143. Like to call a roll call, starting with Jean.
Jean Haley-Dippel here.
Paul.
Paul Brady here.
Cory.
Cory Evans here on August 9th.
Diane Kennedy.
Diane Kennedy here.
Jack Creighton here. Like all those who care to join me and a pledge to the, a pledge to the allegiance. Does anybody like to lead that? Okay, I will then. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which they, for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have a tradition of starting all of our meetings with a public comment. This allows any member of the public to speak on any subject. However, any subject brought up will not be discussed. There will be no discussion or debate on the subject. And although it may be discussed at a later meeting of the select board, there's no guarantee that it, that it will. Is there anybody waiting to speak? All right, not hearing that. We'll move on to our first thing, license.
Jack, there is a couple of people in the audience. I hope the hands raised. I don't know if you want to recognize them right now.
Oh, yeah, I want to recognize them for that. I did not see them.
There is Tom Ryan and C Davis.
Okay.
Do you want to speak with them?
Yes. By the way, if it is a matter that is on our agenda that we'll be discussing later, then we will discuss it later. This is not discussed in the public comment period. So Tom Ryan. You need to unmute yourself, Tom. Tom? Chris Davis, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Chris.
I, I lowered my hand. You referenced, I just wanted to understand procedurally if we'd be, have a chance to talk around 25 Heather a little bit later, so.
Yes, yes, you will. That's why I reminded you of that.
Thank you. I immediately took my hand down.
Okay, we're good to go. Tracy, is there anybody else? Okay.
That's it.
Okay, license permits and events. Friends of Holly Hill Farm, one day liquor license, September 9th, 2022, and a private dinner.
This is something that's, oh, my apologies.
Yeah.
This is something that has happened in the years, so I've got no problem just approving this.
No, I, I know that. I'm looking if anybody here or overview from Tracy. Okay, nobody's here. Go ahead.
There's nobody here.
Cory, you comment?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I move that we approve the one day liquor license for September 9th, 2022. The one day liquor license for September 24th, 2022, and the one day liquor license for November 5th, 2022, outlined in our packet for the Holly Hill Farm events.
Yeah, Cory, you made your motion and there are still people who wish to speak on it. Do you want to hold your motion in advance until they speak or?
My apologies. I thought you gave me the green light. Oh, wait.
Yeah. Paul?
No, I, I was gonna second it. I didn't know.
Made and seconded. The any further discussion? A motion made and seconded for the license for Friends of Holly Hill for 9/9, 9/24, 11/5 for their events. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Jean?
Jean Haley-Dippel, aye.
Paul?
Paul Brady, aye.
Cory?
Cory Evans, aye.
Diane?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to Holly Hill. They do such a wonderful job and their food is unbelievable. And those who have not participated before, we encourage you to do so. And if you can contribute, even better. Thank you. Okay, no, we're moving forward. Actually, we're a little bit ahead of time for the state primary election warrant. Has everybody read that warrant in the, in the packet? Okay, Chris, we're gonna technically, we should wait till 7:15. So Chris, can you maybe discuss that in the interim?
Sure, I, I think it might be close enough to get here. I, I'll filibuster as long as I can. So this is just a ministerial act. This is the official election. The positions that are up for election at the general election in I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is the is the primary, I'm sorry, primary on September 6th. So these are the positions for which primaries would be held by the various political parties on the 6th of September. Every town, the Commonwealth, even though except by the Secretary of State's office, every town, the Commonwealth has to formally adopt called, it's called an election warrant. These are the positions that will be on the primary ballot. So the board just needs to approve it, to vote, to vote it. And then if, if folks could come by in the next few days to sign it, that'll be awesome. It'll be here. If you have problems and need for us to get it to your home to sign it, just let us know. But I think we still need this. But it has to be posted by the end of the month. So I guess you have time, but if, again, these people can just come into the office this week and sign it.
We have some time, Chris. Could you update the public about the various voting, vote by mail procedures and what can they expect? I know people have already been getting ballots and things like that. So perhaps a brief overview.
Sure. So on the website this last week, and I think again, this, we'll be posting updates from Town Clerk Lisa Legg. And the, right now, anyone can vote early by mail. The restrictions on being out of town or anything have been lifted. That request online, the Secretary of State's office has a, has an application form. You can do it in person. You can come to the clerk's office, just fill out a form or print out the form and sign it, mail it in. And that that, that's available now. So you can request a by mail ballot. Early in-person voting will begin on Monday, August 29th. So that's three weeks from yesterday, from yesterday. And that'll be here at Town Hall. That'll go on for that. So people could come in during regular business hours, which includes late hours on Tuesdays. And there'll also be that, that Saturday, people will be able to come in and vote. And that, that, those will also be posted as a flyer that's posted up online. And then you can vote early in person, actual election day, the, the actual day is September 6th. And people can vote as usual that day too, if they haven't voted before, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM here at Town Hall.
Okay, any select board? Jean, I saw your hand up. Jean, did you have your hand up or you?
Yeah, I think Cory's hand was up a little earlier if he wants to go ahead of me.
Okay. Cory?
Yeah, I was just going to tee off that when, and this is just a reminder, if you are going to do a election ballot and you are an unregistered person, don't forget the, the selection where you select which ballot you'd like. I know that, that's something that's, you know, easy to overlook, but makes it easier on Town Clerk's office if you don't forget that first time around.
We have Jean and then Diane.
I think also too, this is an exciting new time in Cohasset. It was redistrict. I think this is the, I could be wrong. I think the first election for our new congressional district. So Representative Lynch is no longer our congressman. We're no longer in the eighth district. We're in the ninth district now. So FYI, you have a brand new opportunity to vote in your brand new district.
Diane?
Thanks. I just have a question, Chris. I remember a couple, like last year or the year before, we were talking about because of the, the three different precincts now in Cohasset, whether those would be split up and we would have an alternative location for voting. Is that not necessary? Remember, we were talking about Wilka Commons.
That is the backup location. Something happened to Town Hall. It'll default to Wilka Commons. The board voted that earlier this year. But that said, absent some emergency, the election will take place here. That's where the early voting will also take place. You just come into the clerk's office and there'll be, I believe that they're setting. I believe they're going to be setting up polling stations in the auditorium in advance. So you'll be able to vote in there. And, and then you'll have to return the ballots thing and sign it. They'll all be sealed. So when you vote early, you seal the ballot up like you would if you're voting absentee. So that'll all be taking place here, Diane, and members of the board at Town Hall.
I think everybody should be aware that one of the things is very, actually pretty good for Cohasset is that although Steve Lynch has served us well for many years, we are, he's a Boston rep. Not a Cohasset rep, not a South Shore. So now that we're in the new district, it behooves everybody to be a lot more active in congressional elections because it's, it's closer to where I think we probably belong, which is on the South Shore. So if you've kind of not paid any attention in the past, because it was like, everything's in Boston, that's changed. So this is a good chance to take advantage of that. Any other comments on that? I don't think we yeah, Cory, you want to?
Yeah, I move that we approve the warrant for the 2022 state primary.
Second.
We have a motion to vote and sign the, the warrant. Is there any, it's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor by roll call. Jean?
Jean Haley-Dippel, aye.
Paul? Paul, you're muted.
Paul Brady, aye.
Cory?
Cory Evans, aye.
Diane?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we are we are ahead by four minutes, but I think we can approve the police detail for the election on September 6th in the primary. Chris, do you have any updates on that police detail?
So this is a, a new, something that the process has changed. It used to just be the clerk would make a request and the police chief would fill it. Now, the board rises the detail of the police chief fills. So the clerk has made a request for the same kind of detail as historically has been done, which is one officer on site for the entire time of the election. They don't, it's not usually the same officer all day long. I don't think, I think they split. That said, the, it's just one. So the, the, the select board now would authorize that detail. And again, I don't know why this is being done this way because we've always thought that's how I guess some communities were, it's more of a challenge. And the select board would then authorize it and then the chief quickly would then fill the detail as he would fill any other detail. This being obviously a temporary.
Diane? I don't know. Diane?
Sorry, my hand is not up.
Okay. Jean?
Are we being asked to vote to detail one police officer per election for this upcoming season or just the primary?
Just the primary.
Okay. I would move to, unless anyone has anything else, I would move to approve the detail of one police officer for the upcoming fall primary.
Okay, we've had a motion made in second to approve an officer for the primary election. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I call for the vote. Diane?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Cory?
Cory Evans, aye.
Paul Brady?
Paul Brady, aye.
Jean?
Jean Haley-Dippel, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, 7:20, 7:25, we have transfer of land into the Affordable Housing Trust. That's in seven minutes. I think there's going to be some discussion on this. So those people who are in the audience, who wish to speak on this, if you could identify yourselves and Tracy, make sure that they're made as panelists or giving them access.
Or so do you want me to allow them to talk as well as the members of the
Well, I want them to, but to keep them muted unless they raise their hand, but I want to be able to see them. And Steve Gomer, of course, Steve Gomer should be a panelist. Are you looking to initiate the conversation? No, I think, I don't want to be overly legalistic. But I don't want anybody who's interested in this to say you started 10 minutes early. So I think we'll give them five minutes early. We'll give them a couple of minutes. But anybody who is hearing this, please make sure that you sign in with Tracy so we know you're there. I know there are two gentlemen who were tried to speak earlier. Okay, I see Rob Spofford. I see Chris Davis. And so far, that's who I see so far. And Rob has his hand up already.
Mr. Chair, if you're comfortable with it, considering we have people that want to speak and this may go a little
I know, I, I just don't want anybody to see that they missed.
Won't end it before time and a lot of this. Okay.
I understand, but we'll run it by, close to the letter, if that's okay. Alright, so we have Rob Spofford. We had Chris Davis. Is there anybody else who's going to want to speak? And Steve, you're speaking for affordable housing and you're the only one from affordable housing.
It is, this was an item on the agenda for affordable housing as opposed to anything further. I'd like to, to lead off, to the extent that you're willing to start.
Yeah, I, I think, but I didn't want to start 10 minutes beforehand because I want to make sure there's, there's no opportunity for people to say it started without them.
We're, we're actually not seeking to limit conversation in any way.
Oh, I know.
As a matter of fact, frankly, we have on our agenda for tomorrow, a meeting with the, the neighbors and the butters. That's a, that is an agenda item. And frankly, that discussion, in our opinion, should rightly take place with the trust. And we're, we're, you know, quite happy to have it and looking forward to, you know, fruitful conversation tomorrow. The original purpose for being here this evening was to simply ask the select board to execute the deed transfer. And based upon a variety of conversations that have been brought to my attention today, I frankly think that that still might be the best process. We, it might be, in our, in our opinion, or I should say in the chair's opinion from the trust, we respectfully request that this be tabled as an agenda item now and brought back up at your next meeting after we've had an opportunity, the trust has had an opportunity to have this conversation with the neighbors.
Well. Well thought out. Steve. The, I see we have some other people. We have Rob Spofford and Chris Davis. Rob has his hand up. Rob?
No, no, I, I understand that, Mr. Chairman, and respectfully, this is the trust's agenda item. If the, if the select board wishes to continue with this conversation with the neighbors, please do so. I just, I, I'm requesting and, and ask for action on my proposal that this be tabled.
Well, I, I don't see that's any controversy, but I, I think it's kind of
It's not a matter of controversy. It's
in, in our I'd like to hear the people who've come here speak. We will, we will consider amending and I'm quite sure that it's going to be granted. But these people have, citizens have come here, have raised their hand. I don't see.
We appreciate that. And I'm, I'm simply making the point.
Okay.
This is not the forum for the trust to be involved in this conversation. The, for the select board, yes. And we understand that.
Very good.
Please, so we, I, I'm simply asking if you can act on, on tabling the item until the next meeting. This will give the trust an opportunity in full, all members, to listen to the neighbors as well. And that's the forum that we believe is, is most appropriate for any kind of fruitful discussion and action. The, for the selectmen to deal with this is, is entirely at your discretion.
Yes, it is our discretion. It is also our discretion to run our meeting. And, and as chair, I want to give Mr. Spofford and Mr. Davis an opportunity to speak.
Fair, no, I appreciate that, but it might, might
Mr. Gomer, please. You've, you've given an opportunity. You've said the same thing three or four times. Merely want to give these gentlemen an opportunity.
I understand that. I, I'm simply making the point, Mr. Chairman, that, that the, because we have a fiduciary duty, we're leaving the meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Gomer, you are out of order. Mr. Spofford? Rob, are you there? I'm not here. Mr. Spofford?
How about that?
Oh, you're right. Okay.
Nice to be, nice to see and be part of the board, Diane. Nice to see you. For those of you that don't know me, I have sat in your seat in previous life, so I understand the, the role of what you're doing. I am, I'm going to let Chris Davis take the lead on this as he's leading our community. Jack, I want to thank you for letting us, I think that and we appreciate Steve's position that he would like to table it. And I think after you hear from, from Chris and, and our concerns, I think that it was probably a prudent move on his part. I'm disappointed, quite frankly, that he has chosen not to participate and listen to us. But I think it's great that you can get the information that we have for you because there's a lot of information that I believe that you need to receive as a board before you take any course of action. So thank you for allowing us and our community, our group, to speak. And, and so I'll turn that over to Chris, who's really our head spokesman here. By the way, I live at 14 Heather Drive. I apologize. I did not indicate that. I am, I am, I am a direct butter to this piece of property. My wife and I, Susan, live at 14 Heather Drive. So Chris, I'll turn it, if Jack, if it's okay with you, I'll turn it over to Chris and let him make his presentation because I think it'll be useful for you to hear our presentation and we'll keep it under the 15 minutes for you because you've got other things to do.
Thank you. That is, that is welcome news indeed. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Hi, this is Chris Davis. I'm at 19 Heather Drive, a direct butter to 25 Heather Drive. I promised to keep this to 14 minutes and 45 seconds. So we should be giving plenty of time. I, I will, I will try to go through this pretty quickly. I think.
Chris, by the way, just if you can, to turn your video on, that would be helpful.
Oh, boy. Okay. There we
Yeah, that's all right, but we, we really do kind of want to do that where it's possible. There we go. Thank you.
Hopefully, I've got some decent lighting here. I thought, I wasn't sure exactly how this was going to play out, although I have a frequent user of them. Well, again, in being respectful of Mr. Gomer and, and, and just to be forthright as well, we've, I've had a, a couple of conversations with Mr. Gomer and, and trying to communicate our, our concerns and, and as well. And he's, they've been receptive to the conversation. I think we prepared this with the idea that the board may be looking to kind of vote on the transfer tonight. We, we really wanted to just kind of communicate some things because they're really our first time to, chance to talk to the board. And I'll start with kind of what I had in my notes, but I'll try and speed through this a little bit more quickly. But I, there was some concern from some of the feedback I was getting that the board, this board was maybe under the impression that we had kind of come to an agreement and understanding with the HD. As I mentioned, we've had a couple of conversations. They've been productive, but I don't think we've gotten to really a common ground on what the, you know, the, the broader issue is, but, but more about how the process proceeds from here. Certainly open day. I plan to attend tomorrow and hopefully we can have that fruitful discussion that was planned. I think it is worth, you know, going through a couple of things here. I think one of the reasons we haven't really got to an agreement is we put a letter together with some requests. I think that was somewhat largely rejected by, by the board. And, you know, I, I think they continue to maintain they really can't enter into any commitments with the, the neighbors until they control the property. And I think
Could you clarify the board is the
The Affordable Housing Trust.
The board is that, okay.
And I think there might be some procedures. And I think there might be some procedural truth to it, but from our perspective, under that construct for the neighbors, it takes a really pretty tremendous leap of faith to, you know, hope that we'll get heard once it's been transferred, so I think that's what we wanted to do here today. And, you know, our, our concerns are pretty straightforward. You know, 25 Heather Drive never should have been included on the town warrant. We're not trying to put that genie back in the bottle at this point, I think what's been done is done. But we do think there's enough information here that needs to be discussed. I think this was the pretext of putting that property on the, on the bond or on the warrant was, it was going to generate six or $700,000 and generate new taxes for the town by putting in the hands of a developer. And frankly, there was no due diligence done to get to that conclusion. I think had there been any due diligence done by the folks who were charged with presenting to this board to kind of put it on the warrant, I think they would have quickly found that it didn't meet the pretext or the objectives of transferring the property. The second part is a little bit more difficult to get to, but the real concern here is just the communication of what the intent is here. It's been really poorly communicated to the community, and there's this cloud of uncertainty about what the intent of the sale is. I think that can be clarified over time, but it is something that could potentially harm our values and. Whatever happens here, again, we're really trying to kind of clear up that uncertainty. You know, what we're really looking for this board to do is, is take a little bit of a pause. You know, instead of transferring and then trying to hope people will do due diligence to kind of get to what the value is and the right process of selling this parcel, we want you to do the due diligence beforehand. We want you to go do that, get an understanding what the value is. There's significant concerns about the value and the expectations to date. And then decide whether it really meets the objectives that were, you know, provided to put it on the warrant for sale. Again, the pretext of hundreds of thousands of dollars and new tax dollars for the town by putting it back on someone's roll. This work can be completed in 30 to 60 days, it's pretty simple to do. It's a little frustrating that it was never done to begin with. I don't know how many on this board or any of the other boards, but I don't think anybody that's had any charge in working on this has even visited the property or done it with the right resources to evaluate the challenges or with it. I think the, the select board has a tough decision here, but I, I think they have the authority to kind of pause this so that the due diligence can get done. I think there's a little bit of an obligation to do it, I would say, as well. You know, town vote, you know, was not a mandate to blindly transfer this property over to the Affordable Housing Trust. It gave you the authority to do that, and I think with the authority comes judgment to consider new information as it's presented, and then decide whether it really met the original objectives, because I don't think anybody had the appropriate picture here before this was put onto town warrant. You know, a lot of new information here, this is, was presented as a 36,000 square foot conforming lot for development. No wetlands on it whatsoever. It has a 350-foot water and drain adhesion that runs the length of the property. 100 feet, 180 feet of it, 200 feet, it's open trench. There's water in it now, I mean, arguably, this is one of the more severe droughts we've ever seen, but it's wet, bring your boots. You know, the property, once you consider setbacks in the other two streams that connect with that open trench area, you're gonna lose 25,000, possibly more square feet of the 36,000 that's available. The cost of engineering to get to the land, to create land and develop, wow, I'm sorry, I lost my life here.
That's all right.
You know, the costs are gonna far outstrip the value of the land. And, you know, the, the number of concessions will be required from Conservation Commission, planning, zoning, to get this actually built, if there's any, you know, relief on the zoning side of things, are gonna far outstrip again what we think is the value here. All of these things are the reason why the town owns the property today. It was, it was identified as a tax taking, but it was actually taken through settlement of about 10 years of litigation in Superior Court. There were two different mass D E P file numbers on this property. One was solved with the merger of the two lots that create my property. The third was actually resolved as part of the settlement with the town, where the town worked with the D E P eventually to kind of remove that final mass D E P file. And basically, the way they did that was by, you know, agreeing not to develop the property. These are really important things and distinctions to kind of identify in the process of how you ultimately put this on town warrant, how you considered it, and how it was voted. And we do think you need to take a little bit of a step back or have folks take a step back to ultimately do this. I'll try and wrap up here quickly, again, we definitely recognize it's a tough decision. I think you've got one group that's saying, you gotta transfer it, you're mandated to do it. You got another group that's saying, hey, we want you to take another step and take a look at the due diligence here before you move forward and reach the objectives. We're not trying to be obstructionist, you know, quite honestly, we're probably the solution to this problem at the end of the day. And I think if everybody can take a little bit of time to kind of evaluate it, I think we have the ability to kind of get the genie back in the bottle, clear up the cloud of confusion around what the intent is here, and make sure that there is a very clean, efficient process that starts with understanding the value of the property, what can be done with it to make it a very clean and efficient sale process, whether it's at the A H T or elsewhere. But we, we're, you know, we're ultimately here to talk about that and hope that you can take that into consideration and use your judgment, you know, before transferring the property over to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah.
I'll stop there.
Yeah, just a point of, does anybody have the actual wording of the town meeting article? Does anybody have it there? Diane, I see you're looking.
It's in our packet, Jack.
I looked, I'm just looking in the packet now, I could not see it, if somebody.
Have it in front of me, what do you need to know?
I just want to have it read, what the actual wordage is.
Like the full thing?
Yeah. I want, well, Jane, do you, do you have it? Do you, do you know what I'm looking for?
I, I, yeah, I have it. I mean, it was Article 16, it says, "To see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of and/or convey the town-owned properties located on 39 Mill Lane shown on," and then it just has the the boundary descriptions and described in a judgment in a tax lien case recorded with the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds and Book 8339, blah, 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 "from the tax custodian for tax title purposes to the Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of creating affordable housing or taking any other action relative thereto."
Okay, so as an attorney, that language in the beginning, are we compelled or are we authorized?
A member should be making legal opinions, sorry.
I'm not, I'm not going to either.
Does it offer?
From federal law, from opining, sorry.
All right, okay.
Given my other.
Diane?
Yeah, and, you know, I, I would like to suggest that we, thanks, Mr. Davis, for your input, I would like to suggest that we do what Mr. Garm has suggested, which is table this. I, I think any further discussion too far into this could negatively impact the negotiating position of the town. And I think this is really, this is exactly why executive sessions are created, so that we can talk about this. You know, I don't think we should take any action right tonight, nor kind of talk theoretically about some of the, you know, some of the property details. I know it's, some of it's been discussed at Affordable Housing Trust in advance of putting together the, the warrant article. But I think right now, where there's some concern, and we would need town council input on, you know, what this actual action at Article 16 requires us to do, I would suggest that we table it and I'll make that a motion.
Yeah, I, well, I tend to agree that, Diane, I wanted to make sure the people who are here had an opportunity to speak. Somebody. Diane, I mean, every, the screen keeps moving. Jane.
I know Cory.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just, here's one thing that I come back to, I mean, this is, this is, needs to be an open process and it needs to be, ethically, the board, you know, we have ethically know nothing, it's not, it's not ethical for us to affect the property. This property is owned by the town and all its residents. If we were to do anything to devalue it or interfere, that could be borderline criminal. That's, and especially because there are members of other, that are on town boards that are on that, that piece of, that, that road, it could be seen as a favor. And town meeting kind of spoke, and I'm encouraged that, and again, I think Mr. Gomer's point was that he's only one member, he can't speak for the trust. And if the trust is willing to, and their legal authority as a, as a independent board, I think it's great that they're willing to have a conversation, and I think that's, I agree with, with Member Kennedy, that that's where this should go, so I would second her motion to table it that way. The Affordable Housing Trust can discuss this with the neighbors in a better format.
Jane?
It was requested that the select board put this on the agenda for quite a few weeks. And Jack and I wanted to see if there was a way that the neighbors and others could resolve matters among themselves in a way that was both reasonable while still adhering to the town meeting vote. And I think, and I don't want to speak for you, Jack, that has continued to be our desire, including before putting this on the select board's agenda. And it's unfortunate that it made its way onto the agenda before there was a more meaningful discussion with the right parties in place. But if putting it on the agenda forced that issue, then maybe that ultimately was a beneficial thing. And so I do think we need to table this in order to allow for that more meaningful resolution to occur. And that, you know, parties can engage with each other in an arms-length way, such that it's my hope, but maybe this is overly optimistic, that we will be able to reach a fair and reasonable resolution in order to meet the ultimate goals that I think we all want, which is to further the goals of affordable housing, but, you know, respecting each other as neighbors too. So, hopefully that will occur.
You know, I fully agree, we, we've looked at this, I've looked at this for, since the beginning and hoped, and I've spoken to various people and hoped that, that they could resolve some type of thing. That being said, I think when citizens come to the select board meeting, they, they should be allowed to speak. And I'm not quite sure whether it's borderline criminal to allow them to speak, but I'll let that statement stand on its own merits.
That's not what I said, at all.
Yep, you did.
No, I said, I said, we can go back to the tape, I said it'd be criminal for us to try to interfere with the value of the property. You have no problem with hearing.
Borderline, you did not say borderline criminal then. No, okay.
Go back to tapes, we can do that offline.
We will, we will. And let's try to keep the dialogue in a positive, less personal manner. We have some discussion, and I see, you know, Chris wants to speak briefly.
Yeah, I, I just want to make one, one final point, we, we don't have a problem speaking with Affordable Housing Trust, we did show up at the first meeting and it was, it was pushed down the road. We, we, you know, watched, several of us at this point now have watched the second meeting, which was in July. And I'll, again, we're more than willing to go back and have a conversation here, I, we're, we're fine with that. I think the tenor of that meeting that we listened to, did not participate in, but listened to, was not particularly thoughtful or, or quite honestly, smart in thinking and of who the people are that are on the other side of this. Or they are in real estate and personal development, things of this nature, I think. My concern is, is that this board needs to, you know, have some level of influence, because you do own the property. You're the stewards of real estate in this town as the select board, and you have an obligation to, you know, oversee how assets are handled. I, I agree with several of the folks who made the comment that we should not be interfering with whatever the eventual value of this, it's not what our intent is here. We just want to make sure that, you know, you are, this process has interfered with the value of all of our homes at this point by creating some of that, we just want to, we're happy to have the conversation and bring it back here, but I think this board needs to pay particular attention to the tenor and the conversation and weigh the information we've given you about the property, there's a lot of valuable information here.
Okay, thank you, Chris, now I see Paul Grady with his hand up, Diane and Melissand Broderick.
Mr. Davis, this is directed towards you, I think that when you guys come back before the boards, both you and the Affordable Housing Trust, that you guys really should ought to sit down. I still haven't gained what your group's clear intent is, you've said some things, so if you could tell me what the intent is, is it just to leave the property alone, is it to build on it, is it for your group to buy it? So those things you might want to just clarify when you come back up before the board and when you have worked with Mr. Gomer and his group. But I really, my suggestion is that you guys have your ducks in a row. You know, as to what intent of what your group wants, we know what the Affordable Housing Trust is looking for, whether your group wants to buy that lot, we don't know.
We can, we want, I think communicating what our ducks in the row would be, I think we've done it. We've asked you to pause to make sure that the due diligence is done and then evaluate whether it meets the objectives of what the original intent was for the sale of this property, because it clearly does not. Second, you know, we're, we're going back to things of interfering with value, we're, we're not in a position to tell you what we will or won't do around that property, but it's not the intent of our efforts here is not to prevent the sale or the transfer. At, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that you clean up the process that was done poorly from the beginning, that you do the due diligence, I, I don't know any business in America or town government that can transfer properties without having a clue as to what the value of that property is. That's what we're asking you to do here, it doesn't take much, you have a conservation agent in town, you have planning, you know, directors of planning, they haven't been at the property to evaluate why you owned it. You have town council to evaluate why you own the property today, you missed on every aspect of it. It's wet, it's undevelopable.
You didn't say that in your previous conversation, so now I'm learning something new, so I thank you for that.
I, I think we did cover it, but I'm having to share mine too, but thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Diane, I see your hand, and I see a Melissand Broderick, who's had a hand up for a while, and I, I don't know what that's, is she there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, can you turn on your camera? It's one of those technicalities of the open meeting law.
No, I don't.
That's fine, it's fine.
I'm sorry, I don't know where that is. Anyway, I just wanted to offer my support to Chris, because he's, he is our spokesman and he's, he's on top of the situation. I'm here, and I just feel that there hasn't been due diligence. It's very disappointing that this is sort of progressing along without anybody really looking at the place. It's a bit of a swamp, and good luck, you know, so.
Yeah, and Miss Melissand, your address, please.
I'm sorry, 37 Cedar Acres Lane.
37 Cedar Acres Lane, well, thank you very much, and I apologize for not getting to you sooner, Diane.
I, I just want to say that I'm the select board member on the Affordable Housing Trust, and I will make sure that the conversation is as open and transparent as it can be.
I know you will.
That our board, our, the select board, as well as the housing trust, you know, does whatever we need to do to, to bring this to resolution, so.
Thank you, Diane, that's, that's very well put, and let's hope that in the spirit of cohesive, these two parties can come to some kind of agreement, and, and we on the select board, we will be looking into the ramifications of the, of the wording of, of that, and there, we don't know what that answer will be, but we will be looking into that, does anybody have any further things, or can we move on?
Just point of order, Mr. Chair, there was a motion to table and a second, so I think just for clarity, we should just vote that out so we can bring this back up later on.
Who made the motion?
Member Kennedy, and I seconded.
Okay. We have a motion, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, starting with Jane.
Jane, Hillary, double die.
Diane?
Diane, Kennedy, aye.
Paul?
Ready, aye.
Cory?
Cory, Evan's aye.
Jack, great, and I, motion carries, and thank you, everybody, for showing up. And let's try to remember that we're all living in the same town, and let's go easy on the heated rhetoric. Um, and let's try to remember that we're all living in the same town and let's go easy on the heated rhetoric. Okay, moving on to Town Hall Building Committee. Is there somebody from Town Hall Building Committee who's here?
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yeah. Do we have anybody from the Town Hall Building Committee who's here?
Mark Cameron is.
Mark, can you give us an update? I'm not seeing where he is. Mark?
How you doing? Just getting in here.
Okay.
Um, I believe uh Phil Lear should be on as well and uh John Lemieux from Vertex.
Okay.
Just give him a minute to. Okay, it looks like we're up.
Yes, you are. And Phil, do you want to lead it off?
Please. Thank you very much for having us, fellow clear chairman of the Town Hall Building Committee. Believe we only have the uh two people from the board uh board, which is myself and Mark. Um, so we don't need to do a roll call here. We have a presentation for you tonight, a PowerPoint. Uh, Mark Cameron is going to start that off. And then we have John Lemieux, who is from our, who is our owner's project manager from Vertex, and he's going to uh take a couple of slides to, we'll do the presentation and then we'll be around for any questions afterwards. Mark?
John's just going to uh set that up for us.
Can somebody authorize me to share? Please? Oh, there we go. All right. There you go, Mark.
So we just wanted to present and review and um share our anticipated timeline um for the next couple of months. Um, first being town, special town meeting in December. We plan to put the full ask for the project on the warrant or request that it be put on the warrant for special town meeting, which we anticipate to be early December of this year. And then subsequently, following a ballot vote um regarding any um debt that we have to incur for the project. And that would be requested to be the earliest possible date, you know, after we get through the holiday season. And um the the mindset behind that is the sooner we can get started in the beginning of the year um in construction would benefit us as we approach winter for the twenty-three, twenty-four season. So if uh if the construction wasn't to start until August, we'd be more susceptible and open to that winter season. And um to help with the cost, it it starting earlier will reduce that, those winter conditions that we would have to incur. Um, so right now, we're in the process of issuing uh an RFP to some construction management firms. We've gotten their, the first part of their proposals already. We've reviewed those, we've uh reviewed them uh individually and as a committee. We've we've evaluated them and as part of the next portion of this RFP process, we need to provide the CM firms with the anticipated timeline of the project so that they can put together a financial proposal to that as well as their full staffing plan. And obviously, you can appreciate the the timing of the project. When that hits will affect firms and the people that they plan to staff for this prospective project. So that is our uh, that is our anticipated timeline. John can go into a few more details regarding that as well.
Sure, thanks, Mark. Um, so basically, just so the uh board understands, you know, basically when you hire a CM at risk, you know, basically first you are, you you qualify, we qualified three firms. Those three firms are about to be invited to do the proposal, but in the proposal, we have to give them durations. We have to give them the duration for pre-construction, uh the duration, the duration of the construction so they can give us a number for their monthly um general conditions. And then they give us a a proposal for their fee, which is a percentage of an estimated amount of construction, uh estimated construction dollars. Um, so you know, as we, as we know, the town authorized um costs for pre-construction um in order to get the CM on board. But right now, we just wanted to kind of show you that we're still six weeks away um from getting us, you know, getting an estimate started from when we say go. Um, we have to issue the RFP, we have a meeting, and again, these dates are as if we started tomorrow. Um, you know, the RFP would be due in a couple of weeks. We would do interviews following that. We do a final selection and then they would work on the estimate sometime in the middle of September. But Mark's question about timing is important because, you know, we do have a couple of, you know, there's been a couple of of discussions about, are we going for fall town meeting? Are we going for spring town meeting? And, you know, these two timelines kind of best show you, you know, the, you know, the um, the two scenarios, you know, what we're talking about right now is really trying to really trying to, if at all possible, if we could get this project bid, that would be fabulous. You know, we get the CM on board, we tell them that we're going to bid it. That way, when we um, you know, go and speak to the town at town meeting, we have bids in hand, which would be, which would be great. We may get some pushback, given the marketplace, um given current market conditions, that they may say, listen, it's just too tight to get bids that soon. In any event, the CM is going to come on board. They're going to do that estimate. If we can get a bid done before uh December town meeting, fabulous. If we can't, we'd still go to the town meeting with an uh, you know, a solid, you know, ninety percent construction document estimate. And that's this, that's this timeline down here and we would start the bidding in February. So instead of bidding October to December, we would bid February to April. So the difference in construction start is April to June uh essentially. The other option is if we wait till the spring. If we wait till the spring of twenty-three till annual town meeting, obviously, we would still get that, you know, the CM on board because we need to, you know, get the number to the town so they can understand kind of where this is trending. The big difference, though, is you would get that estimate, but then you wouldn't be bidding that job until March of twenty-three, March to May, and then town meeting and then a ballot vote in June. So you would execute, you know, the guaranteed maximum price in June, but they probably wouldn't hit the ground until August for construction. Well, what's the difference between the blue line and the yellow line? Well, if you recall from our last presentation, that difference is about a million dollars. It's, you know, if we wait the six months, the job costs continue to go up. So at that point, you know, if we're looking at roughly ten percent a year, five percent of the project would get you about another million bucks onto the, onto the cost of the cost of the job. So um, I think Mark did, I think I hit all the, hit all the points. Um. Any other comments or turn it over for questions? You still there, Mark?
Yep. I know you did a great job, thank you, John.
Okay, I guess we can, um, do we want to leave the screen up or do we just want to go to um to, do members need to have this screen up or do we want to see the view of all the participants? All right, let's just take the screen down and let's take some questions. Yeah, Phil, do you have any further comments? I see Caroline is here. Mark is here. Um, we have a issue with a quorum here of your committee.
Uh, we have, we have three members here. Uh, we we need to have four to have a forum, so we're okay.
Um, but you're all on a committee, correct? Did you, did you, did we post this as a meeting of you, of the Town Hall Committee?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to double check. We're all set to go.
Um, I don't have any, uh, we wanted to just get this information and then answer any questions that you've had at this point.
Okay, and I want to give the members of the Town Hall Committee first uh comments to make any comments that you may feel about various things.
Well, just, I think that the the one resident comment is, regardless of what year, there's certainly an advantage for us to, on on a substantial project like this um to to get it off the ground and get it voted on in the winter months and then being able to um move on into construction very, as the, as the season breaks and as the ground falls and um it's easier to construct in in the summer and even in this heat than it is in in the dire cold. Um, not to mention, we're also being faced with a building that's falling apart as we speak. I mean, we we've just, we've all heard about the elevator that now doesn't function anymore, hundred thousand dollars without any environmental concerns to to repair that. So we're trying to act swiftly here in the best interest of the town so that we don't get, continue to get put in positions where we're having to pour money into a failing, tired building.
Okay, Carolyn, do you have any comments?
No, I think Mark just summed it up very nicely.
Okay. John, any further comments?
Nope.
Very good. I I, yeah, by the way, I think the town should know that this committee has been extraordinarily hardworking. I, in their early days, I watched as they hammered this out, it was very difficult. Like all of our town committees, I don't want to say that they're better, but I want to thank you people here for the work that that you've done. It's been a lot of very, very long hours. Um, members of the uh select board, do you have comments? Jane?
I will thank you for the update and for for the good information, um, just a few sort of technical issues. I think for a debt exclusion, we need to have, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but we addressed this when we thought that you were going to want to put something on the ballot in the fall. Needs to be at least ninety days out in terms of the exact amount. Um, although, Chris, correct me, I think that was the timing for a debt exclusion.
Um, I've actually asked for a confirmation, I've asked council for, I think it is, I I think calling a special election is tighter than that. Um, but I don't remember exactly. The reason it was so long for this is because the Secretary of State's office had a a general election deadline that was very locked in. Um, but that said, I'm 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 asking for confirmation as to what the timing is and I'm know it's definitely longer than thirty days, I don't know if it's on this, it's ninety though, but I'll I'm confirming.
Uh, looks like Carolyn may have an answer.
I just, um, is there a difference between um what we're proposing here and what happened in twenty eighteen? Because in twenty eighteen, we voted the debt exclusion less than two weeks after the town meeting. It was part of a regular election as opposed to a special election and maybe that's the the difference, but I just wonder.
Yeah, that was the difference, um, if if I may, Chairman, great. Um, it it, because the select board already put it on the ballot in advance um of town meeting because the election day was already set. So it's like we're put it on the ballot, you know, which I think at least thirty days in advance. I think it's at least thirty for a regular election for special as other, like a special town meeting. Uh, that's why, that's why there was a, you don't have to have any real gap between town meeting and election, you just have to have enough advanced notice of the election itself.
Okay, does any other comments from the select board?
Can I just, oh, sorry. No, I just wanted to respond to that. Chris, I think it would be helpful if if we see the the um that timeline that the building committee gave us. Um, and then we insert some of the 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 trigger points that we need certain information for the warrant for, you know, calling a special election and or wait until the spring, just so we have all that information in one place.
Diane, do you want that done right now or do you just want that in the packet and disseminated?
Whenever it's ready.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we can, we can, I can.
I don't need it now.
All right.
I can work with um Michelle and get those, drop, drop those dates on there as well, sure.
Okay. Well, any other comments, anybody in the audience? I see Jean's has her hand up, any other comments in the audience? Jane?
Um, so I think there's two pieces of information that are going to be really important for me from a timeline perspective. One, we need to have the actual cost, not a straw man cost. Um, I personally am not willing to put a straw man cost on the ballot or a warrant article for a project as large as Town Hall. I I just don't think that it, that makes sense, um, given what we're asking people to do. So we should consider that and the timing from my perspective at least. Um, second, we do have, and we're going to discuss this later on in the agenda, um, this long-term financial planning group that's happening in parallel, in parallel right now. That's considering the whole lineup of different projects out there, including things like co-hasset's um debt capacity and um the the financial picture so people can make an informed decision. And I would like to see the end product of that group, which I would hope would be finalized by the end of this year, come out again before we make any decisions on it, so people can see the full picture of all of the different asks that are likely to be coming down the pike uh in the short term, um, not just relating to Town Hall, but a whole variety of different projects that we know are out there. Um, again, so they can make an informed decision as they go to the ballot or town meeting. But again, you know, we're trying to accelerate this timeline, being mindful of projects like Town Hall that are out there. So I wanted to put that um out there and, you know, there's a preview of the subsequent agenda items, but from my perspective, that's important for me as we think about timing.
John, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, no, it's it's a great point. I mean, I think everyone's end game is all, is all kind of the same. Everyone wants to know, what's it mean to me? You know, what's the, what's that cost per average family household, you know, for sure? I mean, so from to to kind of the Mark's point, I think it's important that, you know, from what I'm hearing there, it would be great then for us to move ahead with this RFP to the, to these folks and, you know, to the CM firms and say, listen, this is our goal. Our goal is to have bids in hand by December twenty, whatever, you know, December twenty twenty-two. The only question I have to that is, you know, how, you know, you've got a a town meeting date and you've got a ballot vote. And those deadlines you're talking about are important. If you need a deadline before a ballot vote that's going to happen in February, fine, that's that, we can certainly have the numbers. If you tell me you need the number, the number before, you know, by November for a mid-December town meeting, I don't know if it's physically enough time to bid the job. And if we don't bid the job and that bumps us to the spring, that's a million dollar cost essentially by waiting. So that's the kind of stuff I think we want the 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 board to to understand that if we, we can certainly wait to kind of fit it better in, fit it better into schedules, but it will come at an increased cost. That's without changing anything on the drawings, that's just looking at, you know, kind of what the, what the market's doing right now.
Well, I think, John, the answer to that is you're hearing the constraints that that we feel is representing the town and the cost and all of all of this, so.
Sure.
And these are important things for you to understand as you try to figure out how to tell it. And I know Vertex from years ago in Boston, you're, I have great confidence that you could do all this wonderful stuff. So we're dumping more stuff on you, John.
Thanks, thanks, Jack.
You're welcome. Um, Jane, and then, I'm sorry, Paul and then Jane.
Uh, John, thank you for that nice presentation. Um, I will be honest with you, I run on a parallel, a parallel course with the Jean is I like to see numbers. And I'm confused at the one million dollars that you keep putting out there for next year. Right now, I understand fluidity. But at this point in time, material costs are going down if I'm not mistaken, so um.
Yeah, I mean.
A million dollar add-on.
No, it's a, no, it's a great point, Paul. I mean, listen, at the end of the day, if everything shifts down, and again, that's, these are numbers that have been escalated from an estimate that was last done many months ago, which is why we were getting the CM on board to kind of get that, get that new refreshed number. Um, so I think whatever happens, costs go down. But waiting, a difference between a fall and a spring, okay, maybe it's not a, you know, I think the math comes out to nine hundred and something thousand. Could be eight, could be seven, to your point, but my only point is labor only goes up. So even though materials relatively will come down, it will come down for both scenarios. But the difference between bidding a job in the fall of uh, you know, the the spring or excuse me, the fall and then the following spring, you know, that will job six months later typically always cost more than six months before. You know, what that exactly is, I mean, right now, again, it's an estimate. Um, you know, the idea of bringing the CM on board and it just good to think about is once the CM comes on board, we're going to have an estimate when they come on board, we're going to have an estimate of basically done, completed um completed bid documents. And it's as close to a bid as we can get without going to marketplace to do that. And it's as close to a bid as we can get without going to marketplace to do that. So I would just tell you that if this board at some point is considering doing like a school project, you do make the decision a year before the job is, you know, even completely designed before it goes to bid. So the idea of going to market with a, a pretty comprehensive estimate. It, it's going to happen if you're going to do it up the high school over at some point. So I can appreciate why you would rather see hard bids in hand. So that's a question to maybe just consider a little bit. We can't get the hard bid because maybe the town meeting deadline won't allow it. We don't have enough time because we have to pre-qualify all the bidders. Then there's a two-week notice, then there's a two-week advertisement, and then there's two to three weeks to bid it. And if you compress it too much, you get bad numbers. So we would try to fit that in there. But if at some point they just say uncle, that kind of bumps us to the next, you know, kind of the next scenario.
Okay, um, let's see, I have
Jane.
Jane.
Yeah, ju- just to finish my thought on the timing. I think the, the Select Board, once we have the correct information in hand, including on financial planning and other projects we may want to do. I think we can have some flexibility in terms of the ballot vote and even a special meeting. You know, being mindful of these cost escalations that may, may most likely are going to be occurring. We could, for example, do the ballot vote first. I don't think procedurally that is unlawful and it may be unusual, but it's not unlawful.
You're saying just slide that's extended timeline a little bit.
Yeah, if you don't succeed at the ballot, town meeting is a moot point. Um, in many ways, because you don't have the money. And so I think that there's um, some maybe creativity that we could consider in terms of timing, but a part of this depends on, you know, your, your process. And so it is really helpful getting the timing estimates because and figuring out the deadlines we have on our end. But from my standpoint, I'm willing to be creative in terms of both scheduling ballot and town meeting.
That's super helpful.
Out of the regular cadence because it may require that for projects and issues this large.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we're seeing, not just in this project is that there are a number of infrastructure needs that we're, we're trying to, this board is trying to move forward on, and they're difficult. And we've, and flexibility is probably going to be our friend as we try to see what we can do appropriately. And then if things need to be put off in order to make a better product, we need to be flexible. But we also, as to Jean's point, we need to say we can be flexible about the way in which we handle it to deal with the, uh, scheduling, uh, you know, issue. Um, anybody else has any comments? Is there anybody at home?
And no, just, just to kind of firm up what John was saying in the, in the bids versus budgeting. You know, large-scale construction projects, large buildings are typically put up with budgets put together before actually receiving trade partner bids um, for specific work within that overall project. And remember, the bids are really, especially in this kind of market right now, are really only good for thirty days. Some, some bids will even say good for seven days. So it's, it's again, just because we have a bid, we can't sit on it then for a while and expect that two, three months from now, contractors are going to honor those numbers. So that's, that's part of why, why this is structured as a GMP.
Well, thank you. That's very helpful. Any further comments? Is there anybody? Um, I see a Cory, but is there anybody in the audience? Um, Tracy, are we seeing anybody in the audience? I guess not. Go ahead, Cory.
There's one person, sorry, Jack.
Oh, okay.
Audience, Russ Benetti, Hangon Department.
Yeah, I'm good. So, so just on the, on the topic of ballot versus town meeting, this is something that had been bouncing around before. I've had some conversations with some people and I, I think where I landed on it is, I mean, the town meeting floor is where the town kind of gets to, you know, throw down and have a conversation. Um, and it's really hard. I'm not super comfortable asking for money from the town before getting the town in a room to discuss a project. I think that that guidance and to get the pulse of town is, is important. So I would probably myself not be comfortable going, going ballot first. Um, on the topic of like, uh, you know, timelines, I, I don't build buildings. I'm not in this thing. So I'm kind of trying to listen to John and Mark as much as possible. Um, and I, I do understand that, you know, an estimate is, you know, as good as we can get because it's not like we can just, you know, buy one on Amazon and it gets dropped off. So, you know, I'll be looking towards, uh, you guys or Town Hall Building Committee to say, this is an estimate we have. And this is the percentage of, you know, confidence we have. I mean, I think, John, you said earlier, you're at ninety percent design. So, you know, I think w- we all understand that an estimate is going to be an estimate and that you guys are going to get as close as possible to that. So even if we don't have bids in hands, it, you know, I think as you're going through this process, it sounds like you're going to have a pretty solid idea about what this is going to cost. And I think that's, you know, that's the piece of information that's, that's, you know, we, we can have a conversation about because we do have to have these plannings. Planning conversations. On, on the longer-term discussion, obviously, it's very hard to, to kind of project what we're going to be sending money on to three years. I think that understanding things that are shovel-ready, um, and ready to go versus things that we all agree we need to do. Uh, I think we need to kind of understand that those two different buckets exist and we need to understand them both. But um, you know, things that have, that are shovel-ready are, are, you know, things that are, have been many years in the, in the, in the, you know, in the making. So um, I would treat those a little bit differently than some of the long-range plans we have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Cory. Uh, Russ? Russ, you're muted. Well, Russ, if you unmute, we'll put you on anyway. John, and if, if people have pretty much said everything they need to say, um, we, we do want to move on, but, um, John.
Yeah, Jack, just a quick note that regardless of the Select Board's decision about do it with bids or do it with estimate, we're going to get the estimate. The estimate's going to come in from the designer and then the estimate will be reconciled against the CM's estimate. So we will have those two data points. They will be refreshed. The whole total project budget will be updated. Hopefully with little, little, little to no change would be great, um, from what we've been projecting. Um, but we will have that data point and be able to share that with you, um, regardless of the decision of to move on just with that or to try to push towards a bidding situation to further refresh that number with, you know, actual construction dollars to, to Jean's point.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And I think it's very clear, and I think people at home should also be be clear that this, the Select Board, we're listening to all of these. We're having to adjust. We're being flexible. We know where we want to go for the good of the town. And we're not going to be dogmatic about things. What we are going to be dogmatic about is getting a quality product that serves the, the needs of the town and is, uh, the best pricing that we can. Russ, have you? Oh, there he is. Wait a minute, it could be.
It says I'm unmuted.
You are unmuted, but we cannot see you and technically we should be able to see you.
That actually could be a benefit, but.
I wasn't going to point that out, Russ.
No, I'm the first one too. Don't worry about it. Can you see me now?
No.
No? Okay. Well, um, I want to just bring out that CPC has yet to do anything on this. And I think we need to get together fairly quickly. We can do work on the old part of Town Hall. Uh, we can, in the case of, say, an HVAC system proportion map uh, between the new part and the old part. Uh, but we really need to do that, uh, and get that going. Uh, we had approval a couple of years ago, uh, and it's basically a whole new board. Uh, and actually, if I can put it aside, I would appreciate it if we can get a, a full board. I'm missing a planning board member. I'm missing a how, a historical society member uh, and a conservation member. Conservation is being redone and a planning member. So we can't do a thing until the Select Board approves some people so that I have a complete commi- uh, committee. Uh, I, speaking just personally, um, I would support up to the amount that we did a couple of years ago, uh, which I believe is around four and a half million dollars between cash on hand and bonding. Uh, how the rest of the committee is going to look at it is anybody's guess, but I need to get a committee so that we can get this going. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, well, we did our point. We gave you Cory. What else do you need?
I need somebody from Planning Board. I need somebody from Concom. I need somebody from Historical. Uh, Open Space recently was approved, as was, um, Cory in the selectment. But I would not have a quorum. Nor would it be even worth wasting our time to have that few, uh, that many people missing from the board to discuss it and, and, and have any confidence in that vote. So, you know, thank you for putting one on. But you've got to get on, start getting the others.
Well, thank you, Russ. And by the way, if you need, uh, if you need me to speak to anybody who's a potential member, I'd be glad to do so. Are there any other further comments on the town? Diane.
My, my comment is really just to the appointments. I was going to ask Chris to make sure that all of those appointments that Russ mentioned are tend to be votes first at the committees that they make the recommendations to. So I, I think Jack probably since you just offered and Chris, we are going to be talking about committees in a minute, but we should get to those three committees and make sure that they create that liaison. And unfortunately with CPC or fortunately, these are statutorily, statutorily required. So we don't have the option of filling it with citizens. These are, um, specifically these committee members, these committees need to appoint members within to CPC.
Thank you, Diane. And that's a very good point. And you're welcome to join us. So anyway, moving on, um, Select Board, um, fiscal year twenty-three goal. We have a long-term financial planning.
We all said, Jack.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I, I thank you very much.
Apologize. You guys have done good work. Thank you.
No problem. Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, long-term financial planning, what we've, what we've been doing, um, for the people at home. So we've getting various people around the town to put together a very loose group under the guidance of Mike Dick as kind of a facilitator to get an overall feel of the, of the parameters of understanding our long-term financial requirements, needs, and how we're going to pay for them. Um, and Jean's done a lot of work on that. So if Jean, could you, uh, take over on this?
Um, sure. So we had one initial meeting and it was the Chair and Vice Chairs of um, Capital, the Select Board. Uh, there was a school committee member, um, Chair of the Advisory Committee. Uh, Chris, um, Senior, our Town Manager, and Michelle Larry, our Assistant Town Manager. Um, Steve Gerardi, the Chair of our Water Commission. And, um, in the context of that meeting, we discussed high-level goals, uh, problems we were trying to address and potential next steps. And so among the different things that we discussed during that meeting, um, we discussed, for example, the capital projects such as Town Hall um, that were out there. We also discussed, um, taking a look at our operating budget and what we wanted to do there in terms of planning for the future, including any foreseeable issues that we had to account for. Um, we also, um, we also discussed, for example, the fact that we had, for years have had a capital stabilization fund that has been at a two million dollar amount as costs have increased throughout the years. And a part of the money that was in the capital stabilization fund was going to pay for loans for prior projects. And so it really wasn't a full two million. And so when we look at our maintenance expenses, including things like roads and sidewalks, a part of the discussion surrounded how to address what is likely our lag in capital stabilization fund that we've tried to plug with free cash throughout the years. And so we discussed that as well. And all of this was in the context of um, financial policies that the Select Board has. It's on our webpage. Really just trying to level set and get our arms around all the different issues. Uh, the next, um, the, the things that we discuss doing, we're trying to all get on the same page quite literally in terms of sort of the background documents that we thought were going to be particularly helpful. That included the long-term financial plan, excuse me, um, the ten-year capital plan. And that is on the Select Board's webpage under our goals. If you go to that tab, we uploaded some of that key information, but that's, for example, the long-term capital plan that our Capital Budget Committee has put together, which includes contemplation of roads, but not sidewalks. So taking a look at that, looking at the town's operating budget that's set out in our annual town report. And also looking at, um, the work that Hingham has recently done over the year with respect to almost the same exact, um, task, albeit for slightly different projects with respect to a sustainable budget task force. So there, they were looking at both at their budget as well as their capital needs and trying to plot out five to ten years. If, for example, we do a debt exclusion for a big project like a new school or a public safety building, and we also have to look at increasing our operating budget to account for higher costs, including higher personnel costs. What does that look like in terms of the overall tax burden? So that's something that, um, we talked about as well at that meeting. And so right now, where we are is really taking that information in and then beginning sort of the, um, trying to nail down some of the sort of known facts from all the different issues that are out there in a pretty survey way, but still broad enough to sort of capture the big issues, whether it's the Town Hall project, the ongoing school renovation project in terms of where that is, getting some insight again into the operating budgets. So again, just trying to level set and get our arms around that as well as, and this is sort of the last piece. Um, and then I'll stop, as well as getting some basic facts surrounding our population and demographics. Hingham, for example, in its report, did a lot of benchmarking, pulling from the Department of Revenue with respect to looking at, for example, our, our residents' income and how that relates to um, tax burden. And then looking at what peer towns are doing again, so we can get some sense of that and consider also new forms of revenue to bring in that we may want to consider frankly to plug some of these holes for some of these ongoing projects um, or other needs that we may have, which other towns are considering as well. So that's sort of the big picture. And the next meeting is, um, planned to be next Monday at seven o'clock. We're going to post for that. Uh, again, it's going to be the same group trying to figure out what are the next steps? Do we want to do a committee? Do we want to do some, um, uh, smaller pared-down version of this working group to begin really starting to dig in and write a report. Um, and then what do we want to do on the outbound communication side in terms of recommendations? With the goal of trying to move frankly pretty quickly, knowing that there are these other big projects hovering out there with some real time-making constraints on them. So we really do want to accelerate this work in order to come out with a product for the public and for our boards and committees to really look at and use as a way of thinking through how the town, how the town should proceed forward, um, and really educate everyone, including ourselves on the overall big picture in Cohasset and the future.
Thank you, Jean. That's tremendous, tremendous work. And watching the, the group work and the dynamics among the various people is very, um, interesting for those of us who are interested in such things. But this is useful. It's needed. It's consistent with the Select Board goals that were, you know, adopted when this new Select Board came in, you know, in June. So, uh, with progress, do we have? I see Diane has a comment and I see Cory has a comment. Diane, you're muted.
Yeah, Cory, um, we had his hand up first, so I'll let him go.
Okay. Cory, you're muted.
Yeah, no, I'm just, um, sorry, and I, I was, there was a lot there and, you know, I'm just, I was just for a refresher, the motion for this committee was for like an ad hoc committee to be formed with, through the town manager, which is totally fine. Um, and then to kind of which is totally fine. And then to kind of come back to this board with next steps. It sounds like maybe this, the committee went kind of beyond that. And that's fine. We're all trying to get stuff done. So I think that, I mean, from where I'm sitting, the next step really needs to be a formal charge. I mean, if this committee is going to do, going to talk about policy and procedure and goals and all those things, it needs to have the authority of a, of a committee or else it really can't, can't really do much. I also think that if we're going to have those discussions, you know, we have to make appointments. I do know that for advisory, I believe it's not going to be the Chair and Vice Chair. I think someone else wants to sit on it. So I, I think it, it sounds like there's a lot to talk about and you've uncovered a lot of things. I do know that the previous efforts at this were charged by committee and they were very successful. So I think that before this goes to the next steps, getting a charge together even quickly, I think that's what we need to do to really clarify this and, and put this on the right, the right footpath.
Jane?
So just to clarify, this is not a committee that we didn't vote on a committee. We voted on a working group, which the committee would need a charge, so that we haven't charged anything.
I'm not sure. That's, that's, that's a get out of jail free card, though. I mean, if you have a bunch of people together, I think you end up constituting a group, whether you want to or not. I mean, we can run that up the chain a bit, but I think if you're going to meet over and over again.
Could you allow her to finish before you interrupt her? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the purpose of the group was to figure out if we wanted to do a committee, and if so, what would the charge be? And would this group, for example, want to be on that committee or some subset of that committee? I actually believe with advisory, advisory has a rule, they can't be on any committees. And so advisory would automatically be taken off any committee that we did. But I do think it's important that advisory be able to weigh in and collaborate with us, at least from the beginning. And so I do think that some of the next steps, Cory, may likely be, hey, we should recommend to the Select Board that we do a committee and it should be this composition. But I think what at least I want to avoid is I don't want a three-year process with multiple PowerPoints and death by PowerPoint. We're going to need to get to roll up our sleeves and do the work pretty quickly. I look back at that long-range planning committee. There's a bunch of PowerPoints out there that are not publicly available. I only got them because I'm a Select Board member. There was no minutes that were filed. And so there might have been great work done, but nothing is publicly available even to Select Board members who are new. And so I think that a big part of this group is public awareness and education. And so even though it may seem weird that we're publicizing meetings that may frankly be behind closed doors typically between some of the heads, like you as Vice Chair and Chair would meet with Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee last year. We're putting it out there publicly now. And yet maybe a group and maybe that should have been a committee meeting that was posted, but it wasn't. And so this, this effort right now is a real effort to make sure that people who want to see what's going on have that ability, particularly as they watch us collaborate and trying to figure out what is the precise charge? Because I do think having a precise, good, strong charge with timelines, with specific goals, with SMART goals, is going to make sure that this actually is a committee that gets the work done on a specific timeline in a, in a way that's helpful for all of us, including the public. Most importantly, making sure that information is public and transparent, because that's the real purpose of long-range planning too. At the end of the day, so we don't have people wondering, where does a school fit in compared to a Town Hall? Or this issue compared to that issue? We have to get out there and be more transparent. And so it may seem odd, but I think that's really just the, the fundamental intent behind trying to let some of these key stakeholders weigh in on what may become a charge for this, for a future smaller committee at the end of the day.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the, the whole idea is to bring stakeholders together in a, in a kind of unstructured forum. There was some structure to keep it a little organized, but without the strictures of, of charges and whatever. But Diane, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. I, I did attend. I thought it was, I thought it was great information. I, I do think only because I've spent the better part of the last 12 years in the weeds with committee structure and working group structure and the nuances there that we should keep this as an ongoing discussion amongst ourselves and ultimately probably charging something. Because the, the work product technically should be that of our staff and at the direction of the board as opposed to representatives from, you know, various committees. So I just think we need to be careful and think through that so that we can get to decision-making points. I also just want to put a plug in for reviewing the financial policies that are quite old and I squawk about them every year. And, and capital budget being, being, I mean, it was amazing when we did that. But again, it's 10 years later. So I definitely think that needs to get addressed. And I think the Select Board all needs to have it. I would really ask you to work closely with Chris on getting somebody on the finance team as, as a lead in this. And one of the things with some of the working groups in the past has been, you know, it's usually somebody from like Capital, not a Select Board member that is, is kind of pushing some of it. But I, I think all, the whole governance structure of this needs to be very carefully thought out and worked with counsel on it. And I agree, I think we need to get it done as fast as possible. But again, I recognize that the staff has some constraints. The other thing about the, this is something I was going to bring up in Select Board comment period, but there are minutes from lots of committees, including our own executive session minutes that we really haven't paid much attention to over the last couple of years in advisory. So I think we need to make sure that minutes are current, because this is a classic example that you mentioned, the long-range planning group from 2016 or 2017. You know, this is why minutes are required of officially charged committees. And I've had a call from another subcommittee of another elected board in town wondering how they, they determined a small group within them to work on a specific project. And then they brought their minutes to the clerk and the clerk said, I have no place really like officially to post this. So let's just be thoughtful of that. The one thing that they did do in 2016, 17, and I, to, to your point, Jean, I think that whatever that document that you got sent should be shared, because they did do a lot of benchmarking in terms of school population, general population, household income, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that's just a good place to start. It's six years ago. We're clearly a very different community. But a lot of that work was done and we might be able to find out how it was done and expedite that. So that's it. Thank you.
Yeah. Paul Grady had his hand up.
I think Cory has his hand up.
Yeah, I saw Cory. Paul was there and then Cory.
Me?
Yeah.
Well, I like what Gina had to say. I just, I want to parrot off on that is, you know, running in this race is that all this is done in transparency with the town. Their input's important. And I like what you said, Jean, about step-by-step process, getting it done fast, but showing results. But I do want input and communication with the town on a step-by-step process, even if it is a closed-door meeting. And I'd be happy to volunteer, Jean, to one of those committees. I will tell you that. But I'd like to get that out. Like Jean said. A new era, I suppose, is really open and above board. And I think we'll get more consensus that way.
Okay. Cory, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, open above board. I think that this process raises questions. You know, Jean brought up the fact that maybe the other committees didn't have minutes. Well, if you guys, if we don't have a charged committee, it can't have minutes. It can't approve them. It can't vote, right? It's not a committee. So what you're doing now doesn't have any minutes at all. I thought that was one of the problems we were trying to solve. The bylaws, Town Meeting or the Town Manager Act, our bylaws, say that only this Select Board can appoint a committee. So, you know, we can't just have a committee on the side that we didn't appoint in no one's authority to just, you know, make decisions on the side. And it's a very easy fix. We just charge it and we can change the charge. I think that will, is transparent, because that tells people, what is this committee trying to do? People ask me, what's this meeting about? I don't know. I don't have a charge to, to refer them to. So charging is something which brings transparency, because it tells people who's involved. It makes sure that minutes are kept, records are kept. It makes sure that votes are made properly. That's, that's transparency. Having something which is, you know, oh, we posted, but we're not going to keep minutes. And, you know, we're all going to email back and forth. That's not transparent. So I think this is a good time. I support this effort. This is just process. Let's put a charge on it. That way you guys can do your work the right way and we can keep going. This little being in the middle ground here, I don't think is, is the right way to go about it. So I object to the current format and encourages board to charge it.
Jane?
Well, and again, to be clear, we're not taking any votes in terms of this collaboration that we're doing. It's very akin to what we did with the field study meetings, where we had a variety of discussions among key stakeholders and the public was welcome to come in and provide questions. And, you know, we did that last year, the Select Board. We did, had at least three meetings relating to the field study on that point. And, you know, this never came up during that, that time period. But I'm not saying that folks are averse to a committee, but I do think there's some groundwork to be laid for the Select Board to make an educated and informed decision on what we want to do. And, you know, Diane, I think one thing that I do think we want to think through pretty carefully is what is the right governance structure? Is the default, which is a committee, the right way to approach this could? Because if we want to get something done in a efficient but transparent way, are there other ways that we should be also considering, including working with town staff? You know, candidly, a big issue with working with town staff is that, as we all know, we've been short-staffed because our head of finance left and we've been trying to replace that person. And we've also had our treasurer leave as well, and we've been trying to replace that person. So our key financial people are gone. And so we are leaning heavily on our town volunteers, who we're lucky to have, who have a lot of financial acumen in order to backfill some of the, you know, town staff interim staffing capacity issues that we're having while also being asked to, you know, decide on a $20 million Town Hall in the context of the same year, as well as other big projects that we're thinking through. So, so I think we all know how to do a committee. We can all make up a charge for a committee. And I think that that is one way to do it. I think, again, I think we want to think about, are there other ways, other roads to Rome that are equally good, that will give us what we need, including, you know, what you were suggesting, Diane, too, as it relates to thinking through the governance structure pretty carefully. And so I think these are some of the key issues that we want to think through. And, and that's why I think it is important and good to have some key stakeholders from the other committees who are going to weigh in on all of these projects and the budget in their, you know, sort of different capacities, roles, and their statutory responsibilities as well, including, for example, the school committee. It was really great to have them there at that meeting weighing in in the context of all of these sort of town issues that you don't usually see, I, I think, among all these different groups. But I think that collaboration is really important and it's good for the schools.
Yeah, I just, I just clarify, if I was misunderstood, like absolutely, like I think the right representatives were in that meeting, 100%.
Right. And let's be very clear. This has, this grouping has no authority, doesn't have a charge specifically because it shouldn't have a charge. It has no authority. It has no ability to commit, nor does it intend to commit to any course of action. It is allowing people to get together in a purposely informal manner. There's some degree of, you know, we all have to be together, but it's a somewhat informal manner. So we can talk to the school committee. We can talk to people like that. We can throw ideas around. If we're going to go, people want to jump onto a formal, we have to have a committee and I can be Chair of this committee and all that. When you're going to do that, be sure you know exactly what you're setting up, what its purposes are. And we're not there. We need to see what's going on. And this is, again, it has no authority, has no ability to bind anybody or anything to anything. It's a discussion group and a discussion group only. That's what it's meant to be. And it has an effective way to move the town forward because of that. At some point, the Select Board may decide, may decide to set up a committee and charge it. And in which case, they can. But that hasn't happened now, and that is not the intent now. So to, to putting up straw requirements for something that isn't there, isn't real, isn't meant to be, is disingenuous. So I think there will come a time, I hope, then there will be a more specific charge. But to Jean's point, I was on all kinds of committees with all kinds of PowerPoints and, and they sounded wonderful. Nothing got done. Or, or what did get done took forever. You know, we're, we're dealing with plans that are five, six years old. And saying, well, we have to go forward and we have to implement this plan of five years ago, where we have a, a town with a very substantially different population. We have a lot of new people. We've had unprecedented growth. We're, we're dealing with much larger houses put on pieces of land that were formerly deemed undevelopable. And we have a lot of challenges coming. We have a MBTA that may want to put apartment buildings and the parking lots over, over by the train station. We have a lot of things that's going on. And in this kind of thing, we have a lot of people who have not frankly, been all that involved, working with people who have been very involved. And we're, we're, as we're collaborating and looking. And yes, we will, if the Select Board decides for a charge. And then we want to make sure it's a, it's a narrowly focused charge to actually get something done. Anyway, go ahead. Who else? Did somebody else?
I, I would like to reply if that's okay.
It's not a reply. We're having a discussion, Cory.
Okay. I just, you know, I have to say, I take offense to, to the word disingenuous being thrown at me that we talked just earlier in the meeting about not throwing names at each other. So that, that I didn't appreciate.
It was not thrown at you, please.
Okay, I'm the one that's making an objection here. The point is, we don't get to make the call about what is an open meeting violation or not, right? We can't just wave a magic wand and say, well, we're going to group. These eight elected people are going to meet in a room every week and it's not going to be committed. That's not going to fly. That's not how this works. That's not literally, that's not the spirit. That's not what the law, the law says here. If you guys are going to meet on policy, we need to put a committee around it. We just, that's just how this works, guys. And I'm supportive of it. And I don't know why the idea of putting structure around this so it can do things is eliciting such a negative reaction. It's blowing my mind here. We can do the right thing. It's easy. Let's do that.
Are there any other comments? Okay. Any other, Tracy, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to weigh in?
Nope.
Like? Okay. Hearing no further discussion on this, I'm going to move forward to the zoning bylaw committee update. Tom Callahan, who was the Chair, was unable to be here. And very briefly, Clark Brewer, Cassie Metal, Tax, I always have a problem with that. Clark Brewer, David Farag, and Tom Callahan, along with myself, I'm the selectman. Originally, there was some discussion that we might be able to accelerate this process of producing some changes in the zoning bylaw. And now I think there's a recognition that the earliest that could happen was spring. So that's what they're aiming. They are, they were supposed to have a meeting yesterday. It got canceled. Their meeting tomorrow. And the background of this is, and I've been on the zoning bylaw committee for probably five years, along with a lot of other people. And we had put forth a fairly substantial zoning bylaw changes and updates. We did have a problem getting a consultant to do on, to work on it, but through a lot of work. But through a lot of work, especially from Tom Callahan, we were able to get something before town meeting. Um, there was a lot of opposition, there were a lot of developers opposed to it, a lot of. Professionals who worked for developers. Um, who had relationships and it was kind of a um. And there's a lot of of doubt on town meeting floor that they, there wasn't enough of clear understanding. And as a result, what we did is we pulled it off the town meeting floor. And said we would put it off, and that was a parliamentary procedure, protect the town's ability to go forward. Because if it had been voted down, it would have put a a two-year moratorium on any changes. At that time, there was some understanding that we would then kind of regroup. And the zoning bylaw uh. Committee, I, Tom was not the chair of that, somebody else was, would. Uh, some people thought that they would come forth in the spring town meeting. You know, regroup and reform or or reform the proposals, unfortunately, that never happened. So, um, the new select board, when we came in, we were faced with a situation where. We really had a defunct zoning bylaw, no moving forward on. Something and and zoning, of course, is what protects the town and guides the town's development. And procedures on how the town will look. So, uh, we have reconstituted that, they're moving forward. One of the things that was done uh very on, very early on in um, I think June. Is we empowered the town council and Judge Cutler, who works for KP Law. Who's one of probably the foremost uh zoning attorney, she was formerly chief uh chief justice of the land court. She has been working with uh the town and with the bylaw to. Figure out a way in which we can redo these, and there's some procedural. Things that we're discussing about how to do it, there's a couple of things, I don't think we need to go into all the details. On the various strategies of rewriting legal codes unless we'd like to be here till two in the morning. But anyway, I think the thing is that this is an energized uh bylaw um working group. As moving forward, and as we all recall, what we did is we made it a standalone. Group as opposed to um a subset of the um. Master plan implementation, so it reports directly to the select board, so we know exactly what's what's going on, and I think. We're hopefully in the spring going to have. Uh, some pretty good insights and a pretty good product. Um, but it's, it's a lot of work, it's very intricate, it's very um. Intensive, but it is the way in which a community sets the zoning and the standards to control their own destiny. So. Here in the report of the bylaw. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, hearing no comments and questions, uh, let's move on. To the board and committee openings. Um, and Diane, you mentioned this earlier, it's a very good point, and Russ mentioned it, we do have these openings. Does either Chris or Tracy have a list? Um, of the most. The most important openings. I know we have one in the packet.
I put a list in the packet, and the only update is. Um, there is three positions, as Russ said, because I wasn't aware that the historical, uh, Susan Sardina resigned early, so her term until twenty twenty-three is open. But everything else should be up to date on the list that was updated last Friday. Or Thursday.
Any uh comments uh from the board, does anybody think there are any particular committees that we ought to focus on? Or would everybody like to raise their hand and thank you, Paul, and volunteer to meet with everybody who wants to be on a board and committee?
So, what did you say, historical, I don't have it in front of me right now with my dog sitting on my phone.
But I'm sorry, Paul, what did you say?
I crazy, I apologize, did you say historical?
So. Uh, CPC needs one full member for uh conservation, one planning board, and they also need, which wasn't on the list, one member of historical. The member from historical resigned early, so this, that term is open for another year.
So they need from where?
Historical.
No, they need just from anybody that we just want to go on it?
No. One member of conservation, one man or member of planning board and one member from historical.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking with the historical society guy.
No, nope, historical commission.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, are there any other questions about this? Okay, let's, all the people at home are listening.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, oh, I apologize, Diane.
That's all right, sorry. Um, no, just the one of the things, might I suggest that the the chair um send an email to the chairs of his, the historical commission, the conservation commission and the planning board. And ask that they, on their, you know, as soonest agenda. Um, make an appointment because they have to, they have to post on an agenda and select amongst themselves a member to serve on CPC, I think the rest are for the most part. Other than, by the way, Jack, um, the open space and rec committee is looking also for a rep from conservation. So that you might want to include the ones that are going to require action by another committee or commission. Um, and just send them an email. I mean, this is a challenge with uh committees that are made up of people that are also serving on other, you know, um, especially the regulatory boards that have a lot going on, so. Um, definitely something to consider as we think about governance.
Thank you, Diane, and it you, it's been noted that you have been steadfast through. I was about to say many years, through your years. As really encouraging people to join the boards and committees. You know, and thank you for that, you've done a very good job. Any other comments? Okay, approval of minutes.
Yeah, can you ever hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry, by the way, just so you know, when I'm looking at that, if you are on the top thing, I can't see the hand. So be. So wave your hand, so it's not because I'm ignoring you, it's because I don't see the yellow hand.
Yeah, um, I think we already discussed this, but just to refresh my memory, I don't think that. For example, if planning or conservation didn't want to appoint anyone because they're just. Feel too busy to be on these other committees. That they could appoint a citizen at large to stand in their shoes, I don't think the CPC statute allows that, but Diane would confirm.
That's. That's correct.
Yeah, so it it says what it says.
Okay.
Okay, approval of minutes, seven twelve, twenty twenty-two. Anybody have any issues with those minutes?
It looked good, so moved. Second.
We have a ma- motion made and seconded to approve the minutes for for seven twenty-two, two oh two-two. Um, is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, Jane.
He can handle it.
Diane.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul. Corey.
Corey Evans, I.
Jack Creighton, I, the motion passes unanimously. Chris. Update us on roads and sidewalks and the ARPA money.
Okay, um, so I have uh this week's traffic updates. Um, Pond Street gas work continues, that's from the, from the high school on up uh to CJ to three A. Uh, there will be two-way traffic, but it'll be alternating based on police details. Uh, and the plan for that, the goal of that is to get that done by August, uh, this, this is an expansion of the gas main capacity that National Grid has asked for. They will be paying for a full repave, uh, that though will not be placed until the spring after the winter settlement of the of the pipes, so they'll be patching it. Uh, and then the full repair will happen in the spring. Sawyer Street uh work is continuing on raising, if you notice, the first cor- course is down, but they have to raise all of the uh, the uh. Covers and grates up a bit to to accommodate the next level. Uh, you saw that all the, the side, the curbing is all in for that sidewalk, so that what'll happen after they raise the structures. Uh, they will be doing um. The paving now, um, there won't be any full detour, so the road's back to two-way, but. If they're doing some work, they may have to, there may be a temporary delay as you go around, there'll be, there'll be details directing people, so that's Sawyer Street. And on North Main, uh, anyone has been on that, so there's also, again, this is gas main work, that's ongoing and um. That has been detoured, so you have to go around it, so if you're coming into town. Uh, you either have to go out on Drew's Road to cut around or go up to three A. The good news is it's right before the train station, so. If you have to go out, you may, if you're coming back in the town, go out, which I had to do multiple times, like you forgetting it's there, and I end up calling up to three A, so I get a tour of the town every time I come in. The um. Uh, and that's going to be continuing again, but that's a detour, so residents can come in and out of that, but between forest and the train station, it's it's closed until I finish that work. Uh, so that'll be, that'll be uh this week. Uh, and then the good. Three A, uh, that sewer line, that that's done for now, uh, there will be some trench paving in September, that said, the road will be open for two-way traffic now, uh, until I do that work in September. Uh, and then the big repave of that, I think, is a good year away, and that's on the, on the states. So those are the road updates, and again, the sidewalk on Sawyer will also be done as part of this, that new piece. Some upgrades uh on some. Questions on roads, road repaving? Paul.
One, the three A work, is this, I again, and correct me if I'm wrong, is this all for the new project going over by Stop and Shop?
Uh, yeah, on three A, yeah, that's that's to sewer that whole parcel.
Tear up to that one project.
Yeah, that's running, it's, it's, we're running a sewer connection line from the Stop and Shop Plaza down three A. And that it's it's what used to be Tupelo Road, it doesn't go anywhere anymore. But there's a pump station there, so that ties into the pump station, which already exists, and then gets pumped up the hill.
But that. Just wondering about it, Chris, because it just seems like an awful lot of work for one project that was going to be on uh Septic.
Well, they're paying for it, it's all being paid for fully by the owner of the pro- property and um. Um, it that's, that was the, that was the cleanest tie-in, uh, as I understand it, that's what the sewer commission negotiated. Was a line that ran that way, and it's it's for, remember, this could be. Twenty housing units on top of that new building, so it's.
Going there, I'm just saying the inconvenience to the citizens going up and down three A, that's all.
Oh, yeah, no, it's definitely, I I got caught the other day in all three, I practically had to go to situ to come back to town. So, uh, believe I, I appreciate the frustration everybody's feeling. Um, the good news is that at least that part's done, and the others will be done, uh, hopefully by the end of, my plan is to have. Sawyer and Pond by the end of August, so those will be back. Uh, and Maine too, I think will be done that, so um. Then there'll be some repaving in spring, but the repaving is a little faster. When they do the uh, the milling and the repaving, when those get done, it's fairly fast, so.
Christmas beachwood on the list, I'm sorry, did you?
No, that hasn't been dug up yet, uh, we actually, they had to um. I think they have to rebid the water main work, unfortunately, only one bid came in and it came in too high. So, uh, Michelle is now working with the Water Commission to rebid that work. Uh, so unfortunately, that work, um, that, we we still hope it'll get done, uh, that that water main, but it really depends on the turnaround, so.
Okay, Chris, and you were going to talk about the ARPA.
So, um, I I just talked to Don today, so the second half of our. Eight hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, so basically four hundred and fifty thousand. Been delivered from the feds, so that's been delivered, so we have it in the town coffers, so the full eight hundred ninety-five thousand. Was transferred. Direct date to Cohasset has been transferred, the county still has control of the one point six million dollars, um, that's uh, that's up at Norfolk County land. Um, a- as of today. A six hundred thousand was allocated by the board. We're still hoping to have. Uh, a couple of those major projects, the library roof, the turf field, go through the county, the piece of the county has. Uh, that said, there's been some getting them to, you know, acknowledge what we're going through, and it's been. Unfortunately, they still seem to be sticking to this line that it can only be limited to certain. Types of things, even though the feds have given multiple. Multiple uh. Uh, rulings that the first ten million of all the money could be pretty much used for any purpose to simplify things. If you remember, Don did a whole revenue replacement thing, they didn't require that anymore. Uh, that said, the county's position is it's ten million dollars for the whole county and really, our allocation of that is only a hundred thousand, so. Uh, that means one point five million is, has to be targeted to, which is still broad, but not everything. Only a hundred thousand is going to be used for any purpose, we're still in ongoing conversations, I hope to see, uh, I'm hosting the Norfolk County Managers here in Cohasset for the first time next week. We'll have further conversations about what's going on with that because we're all in the same boat. So, uh, um, we we are going to be uh working with the county to get money uh for that library roof and the turf field, uh, at least. Uh, from that one point six million dollars. So that's where we stand, that, um.
Chris, the, you know, the other money that's sitting in the, in Beacon Hill. Do you know the status on that, is there any hope for that?
So, um, well, as always, ho- hope springs eternal, right, so. That said, the legislature at the last minute did not pass their big economic development bill. Uh, which included money for class, was money for Elm Street and money for um Parker Ave for the uh CSCR building. And and again, I I I don't know how they were kind of, the the, that bill included ARPA money and included bond money and included state surplus money. Uh, so I couldn't tell you, because I don't think they ever determined how Cohasset's project could be funded, that's, the bond bill didn't pass. That said, it could, I mean, the the speaker has said, the legislature, although at least the House needs to take a vacation and they'll come back. The Senate wants to get right back to work, so um, there's a lot of. Demand for this from communities all across the state, there's a lot of money, billions of billions of dollars, and it's concerned. And the ARPA money that's not, not encumbered will end up potentially being clawed back and nobody wants that to happen. Um, we're still watching it, Jack, but at the moment, unfortunately, that 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 bill, which had, again, six, fifth, almost seven hundred thousand dollars for Cohasset in that bill. That at the moment is on hold.
Okay, I I I I knew it hadn't passed, and I'd, I'd heard at Beacon Hill they were snorting around to try to see if they could. Resurrect part of it because it is a wonderful thing. To bring back to communities, so I just didn't know if you had an update.
Yeah, I said, that's the update as I, as I know it, Jack.
Yeah, and Jean has her hand up.
So. I might understand that Norfolk County is requiring that they'll only reimburse Cohasset for its quote share if it falls within statutory categories set out by Treasury. And those statutory categories could include, for example, the GAC filtration system. That requires more money because the amount has come in more than we expected.
There there's a number of, it, it, while it's broad, it's not, it's not any government purpose, there's certain things that it can't be used for, um. The town has has already asked the state to consider, and 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 by the way, uh, the the. The granular carbon filter, which was approved at town meeting. Uh, for state revolving fund money, this is the water, the waterfront money of the state gives out at low interest rates or no interest rates. Um, the um. The project has, uh, the cost estimate has gone up substantially, it's about two million dollar increase, I I believe, the last number. And um, this, the town has asked the state to consider additional funding from the state for that project. So, all right, now on that, is seeing if the state will increase of the amount they'll offer us, again, one of the only projects that's being stuck like this, this was a, you know. Years are talking about, you know, supply chain and availability issues. So that's not being built in the short term, that said, the Water Department is still watching very closely, we're commission. You can see if the state can can. Release more funds from the revolving fund for us for for that low interest, no interest commitment.
Any other comments, or Diane, is that your hand up, or?
Just, just to follow up on that, on that filtration system that the Water Department needs, only because I think it's. I I'm not up on it, but is that something that we need, like as an emergency, is it something that, no?
No, it's not an emergency, but it's 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 part of the plan and and it's important. For the long term viability of the plant, uh, just uh, it's another treatment level that will just improve water quality for the long. Uh, i- i- you know, it's not an emergency thing, that said, it would, it's something that's in the planet and and should be installed. Uh, and and the hope is that it'll get done and we'll get a price that works and uh. Yeah. But it, it's funny, some things, I, and I've been reading the, not to digress too far here, some things are dropping in price, gas prices are coming down, which is awesome, that's definitely helping us. Uh, and some other prices are coming down, and there are other things like these, which are, I just heard from Hull today at another meeting, that they're thirteen months. Backwatered on a generator for one of their buildings, so some products are very far behind and some are actually accelerating again, so. It's kind of a hit in this, but I'm I'm afraid this is kind of specialty stuff for Water Department.
Right. Any other uh comments?
I guess one question I have on the ARPA funds is, it may, um. We we may want to. Particularly in the context of this long-term planning we're doing. Really think carefully about trying to leverage that money. And the highest and best need for it, including based on those statutory categories. That, you know, it, we're not just plugging holes or using it on people here and there, but. That, you know, we're not just plugging holes or using it on people here and there, but um, really trying to be. Strategic with the money, and so. I think it would help Chris to begin identifying categories within the statutory framework, like water and sewer cleanup. Um, I believe that broadband was another one, so there might be some work there. I know that there were some other COVID categories, but if we're going back to that world, I think we should begin discussing. How to best use that one point six million dollars, so we don't lose it, because we have to spend it, if I recall correctly, by FY twenty twenty four, so we absolutely want to make sure that. We grab that money, particularly if, for example, the state doesn't allow us that access to the revolving fund, and we're stuck two million in the hole on this GAC system. You know, we can have a contingency, but I think we should start to plan for it.
Absolutely, uh, and with some of the thoughts we had, I think it, things have changed a bit, both from what the state was providing in funding and. And what, and by the way, this is not ARPA per se, but it's, it's it's related in the sense that the federal government is about to pass this gigantic clean energy bill. Uh, that's going to free up lots of money too, that'll mostly pass through the states for things like charging stations and and resiliency programs, and we don't know yet. What that will mean at the local level, but it will mean that we have the opportunity for more funding availability, so um, and we'll see where that, where that goes. Uh, and just one last quick update, if if I may, Jack, so.
Of course.
The uh, on personnel, so we we actually are finalizing a a treasurer collector, which we're very excited, so we uh, I'm not prepared to announce the name quite yet, but we're, we actually have a treasurer collector. I'm I'm uh, ready to go, which is exciting, and then we're continuing interviews for a um finance director, so we had a. Uh, a good one today, and we have another one scheduled for next week, and we're continuing to look, so I'm optimistic that we've um, we've gotten a very good treasurer collector candidate. Uh, and um, or, and I think um, again, you know, Paula was awesome, I'm I'm sorry she left, so we're not going to. Replace this, this new person will not be Paula, but they will be different, but really good. And uh, and Don was in today doing his work for us, and he met with a candidate for us to just go over accounting stuff, it was very, very helpful. And giving that time, so I'm hopeful, perhaps in two weeks, to have a formal update on both of those.
Yeah, Chris, on the uh, on the, on this subject of of Don, I don't want to go too far into the weeds, but. There is some financial modeling that he had done with um capital planning and Brian Host, which is pretty intricate stuff. Did, did we not make some arrangement with him and his new firm, Don's new firm, that we would still have him available for that very specific financial modeling?
We actually have him, we have him available, in fact, I talked to him about that very point today, so we have him available for the year in closing, so that's what he's doing. He's still working, uh, doing finance director work, making sure our accounting is done, and closing the books for FY twenty two, and opening for FY twenty two. I did talk to him, Jack, about the very specific thing, and he's not sure, he doesn't have any availability now. And he's not sure if he'll have it in the fall, just because of the backlog of clients, and not that this is important, not that this is not important, not that he doesn't like doing it. Um, he's just not sure about his availability, so. Uh, and I will continue to ask, that said, his, all his work is available, I mean, he did a number of Excel spreadsheets on debt and all, so we have all things. And I'm sure I can chat with him as needed, whether or not, and I've impressed upon him our great desire to have him.
Good, okay.
This fall, um, so uh, and 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 I've expressed specifically, uh, Jack, that that, you know, this is coming right from the chair, so um, so he understands that, so uh.
Good.
Prevail upon him.
Yeah, for people at home, what this means is there are financial modeling, it's kind of like a series of formulas, which will calculate what happens when a. Uh, something that we've bought starts wearing out, how do you calculate what, the value of that, and how you raise the money to replace it? And, and then you have to factor in the tax revenues coming in, the potential money coming in from ARPA funds. It's pretty complicated, and Don did a very good job, it's difficult to understand, so anyway, just so people at home have some idea that. That uh, we're doing this. Anyway, any other uh comments? All right, let's go on to select board comments, and let's start with Corey.
Yeah, I think everyone can see this coming, um, I'm going to use my time here to remind the board and to read. Uh, basically, got into the Secretary of State and the Attorney General on uh what a committee is, so there is no phrase for committee or working group. The defining wording is public body, and a public body, as defined by the Secretary of State in their definitions, is a multiple-member board, commission, committee, or subcommittee. Within the executive legislative branch, blah blah, within any district, city, region, or town, however created, elected, or appointed, or otherwise constituted. Established to serve a purpose, a public purpose, especially if it was created to advise or make recommendations to a public body. More healing, the Attorney General, while there is no comprehensive list of public bodies, any multi-member board, commission, committee, or subcommittee. With, within a region or town, if established to serve a public purpose, is subject to open meeting law, so I will warn my colleagues that choose not to listen to me. You are skating on thin ice, and you are subject to open meeting law for this stuff. I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Corey. Um, Paul.
Uh, that was a yearful, I'm gonna have to digest that one, or any comments.
No, we're not discussing that, this is your select board comment here.
I'm digesting it, I don't have any comment.
Okay. Um, Diane.
Um, a couple of things, one, just for a future agenda item, I would love to talk about, we kind of referenced it. Um, tangentially earlier, um, cell towers. I, my neighborhoods, I'm getting calls like almost every day, um, it's just really bad. Um, so, and I know that we've looked into other locations, Chris is raising his hand, so I'll just zipper it for a sec.
Uh, thank you for bringing that up, so the town, the installation of that emergency call box has happened, we're just still testing it. Uh, Rocky Beach, there, we do have that emergency call box, we talked about, which will greatly enhance emergency communications in that whole area. Uh, it, it, we haven't officially christened it yet, but the testing is happening, so, uh, and there will be more on the, on the cell towers in the fall, Diane, I promise.
Thanks, I mean, a- a- as much as I appreciate, because I've been at the Black Rock Beach where there's been medical emergencies, so that's huge, but again. A lot of the streets off Jerusalem are cul-de-sacs, and when we lose electricity sometimes for days, and there's never any cell service. People couldn't get there, um, if they needed a car, you know, in a, in a blizzard, so cell towers or some other, you know, option for residents here, um, is going to be important. Um, that the next um thing I want to bring up is Cohasset has lost, and I'm going to get really choked up here, two um very, very special people. The first being Tony Sistito. Who is um the patriarch of the Sistito family that many of us know, um, is Tony worked for the town of Cohasset for forty-four years. Um, and just was a a gem of a human being. And secondly, I'd like to um. Ask for a a moment of silence for for Tony, as well as for Sam Wakeman, who passed last week. Um, I just want to say about Sam, um. Truly, in my. Whatever, years of being on both the select board and being involved in town government, um, Sam Wakeman was always, to me. The, the, the beacon of rational, reasonable, engaged. Discussions, protecting the the residents, you know, asking the tough questions um about finances. Um, he served on advisory, he served on, you know, for the last maybe eight or nine years on capital budget. Um, and truly, um. When I was running for selectman the first year, Sam, I I went to town meeting, and Sam gave a speech, um, and he stood up, and he basically was saying. Her number one obligation in this town is to the residents, and to the their, their taxes, and to um making sure that the decisions are made. Um, with the best interest of the whole in the town, and Sam was the person. That pushed and pushed and pushed with a few other folks early on to get the financial management policies, to get a capital. A ten-year capital plan, et cetera, and um, h- h- his, his uh loss is is huge and felt widely by um residents and and the government. In Cohasset, so if I could just ask for a moment of silence for both Tony Sistito and Sam Wakeman, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, I just got a message too, that Sam was also on the Town Hall Building Committee, and and really, in the last. Number of, you know, there's been three of them in the last fifteen years, and um, always brought. That practical Yankee frugality to the discussions and and moved a lot of projects forward in town, so thank you.
Thank you Diane, that was, that was heartfelt. And was heartfelt by the whole town of Cohasset. Jean.
Um, well, I wanted to share in in the um condolences that Diane said, including to the Sistito and Wakeman families. Uh, Sam was also someone who I spoke to when I was running for a select board, and he encouraged me and explained. Financial planning and our financial policies, and really helped educate me on the town's finances, and we talked about long-term financial planning, I remember that. Quite distinctly, um, and our shared views on that, and so I hope we carry the mantle for him. Um, so again, condolences to the Wakeman and Sistito families. Um, another thing that I wanted to raise, which I realize is quite random, um, but. I wanted to at least get the select board thinking about Miami, and in Miami. They are raising their roads by two feet in order to address flooding. And it's a very interesting, if not controversial, project, and as federal money comes down the pipeline for resiliency. This is something that Mike Sardina alluded to when we were discussing the Elm Street project in terms of raising the roads. And how we might want to consider elevation changes there in order to. Protect those areas, which has both upsides and downsides, depending on which part of the road elevation you're on. With respect to where the water drains, but if you Google Miami flood elevation roads, you see there's a very extensive, interesting project going on. There that might be worth beginning to consider and think about. Um, what we might want to do there, including to leverage federal money, um, that might be time limited, and we want to get. Uh, the best we can out of that money and grants, if possible, um, and I know that that's something that Lauren Lind had previously. Discussed and alluded to, and you know, that might be something that we. Want to um have on a future select board meeting, to bring Lauren over, as we talk about applying for a big resiliency grant, to think about what that means, but it is an expensive. Big comprehensive issue, and so I think it's worth um, to the extent people are interested, looking at what other places are doing and lessons learned there.
Thank you, Jean, and uh, and I would echo that on the resiliency, one of the things that happens is, when something is, a new construction is built, it's higher. What it really does, unintended, is the water can't go there, so it goes to the next property, and some of that property is James Brook. Um, and I know part of the harbor committee, part of it is kind of morphing into a resiliency committee, because they think. That in our breakwater is probably. Um, things have changed very rapidly in the past couple of years, and so what we wanted to do a couple of years ago, I think has got to adapt to what we have to do now. But really, I think, you know, uh, D- Diane and and Jean spoke so eloquently of 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 Sam and and uh, and and Tony. They will be missed. But their contributions. You know, in in Sam's work in the town government, and in Tony's work, and the Sistito clan, and S- and Sam's relatives. That spirit lives on in our wonderful town, and for some reason, it always seems that Cohasset brings out the best in people. So, as we're on the select board, I think we have a real charge to always remember that. And remember that it's our responsibility as members of the select board to enhance that sense of specialness. Of Cohasset and the people in Cohasset, so. And meanwhile, as we go forward to the next week. Let's be thinking, keep Sam and Tony. As something that just is now part of us, and let's try to remember that, so thank you all for a very, very wonderful meeting. And um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion made and adjourned, roll call, vote, starting with Jean.
Jeanne Hillydippel, die.
Diane.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Corey.
Corey Evans, I.
Paul Grady.
Paul Grady, I.
Jack Creighton, I, um, I, this meeting stands adjourned, thank you all very much for your service to.